Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to this meeting of the Loveland Board of Education. I'd like to ask our treasurer, Mr. Hawley, for a roll call.
Dr. Lorenz?
Here.
Ms. Pettit?
Here.
Mrs. Washburn?
Present.
We'll call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock, and I will ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, which is in board docs. I see Ms. Pettit, and then I kind of saw Mrs. Washburn nod her head, so I believe we have a motion in a second to adopt the agenda. Any questions or discussion about the agenda? Seeing none, can we vote on that, Mr. Hawley?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I'd like to invite you all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Eileen Washburn and Hannah Washburn.
This allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, pure and just as one.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is board member discussion topic, and before we move into the planning commission appointments, I would just like to make a quick statement regarding public input. Most of the public input that has come to us since the last meeting has been, as you can imagine, concerning the appointment to the vacant board seats. We have had just today one communication regarding how school will start up in the fall, so people are beginning to really consider what's going to happen next fall for school and give us some really thoughtful and good input, so that was a good communication that we had. We have also had one communication asking for public input at our May 28 meeting, but since we will still be in this Zoom format on May 28th and since the board has not had the opportunity to discuss any different public input, it is my suggestion that we take that input and any other input that we get and that I would report it to the board as input for public input for that meeting. I would suggest that the board will need to be ready May 28th to discuss if we are continuing virtual meetings in June, how we might consider public participation in that way or in some other way. So if that's agreeable with the other board members, that's the way I will operate until we get to May 28th at least.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a good plan. We definitely want to make sure we talk about how to get the public participating again and their voices heard, so we will for sure be working on that. I just want to make sure we're doing it in the safest way possible for everybody, following the governor's guidance and the Department of Health.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move into talking about the planning commission appointments. And Mrs. Washburn, I think you have some good news to report to us.
Yes, I contacted all of the community participants that we extended invitations to, to be part of the commission, and 100% of them accepted. So that's very exciting. I talked to people with a lot of great ideas who were energized and are ready to go. So we will get that rolling so we can again have that community input and move things in the right direction for the district and the community. As far as teachers go, we've received the list and we haven't contacted any of them yet, but we've had a busy week with interviewing candidates for the board seats. So I know that there were some questions about that today from some teachers, so we haven't forgotten about you.
Well, and just to be sure, we received eight applicants. We have seven spots, and four of those were teachers, but then we have a variety of other staff. And so my thinking is that we would be working to make sure that we have a good representation, and there might be one teacher name that needs to be dropped off the list, but those staff members would be notified along with the with the community participants, and we're going to try and get something started. I believe we're going to try and get at least a Zoom meeting to get things rolling.
What time are you thinking would be an appropriate time? I think initially we had talked that, Eileen, you might run some dates or times past people when you talk to them. What time of the evening are we thinking for our first meeting?
Everybody was very flexible since in the majority of people are still at home, so I think anything after 6 seemed to work well, and most nights people were available, so.
So maybe try for a 6:30 time?
Yeah.
And I picked some, I picked four dates coming up just to get us started. So I tried to pick some Wednesdays and then Wednesday and a Thursday. Tried to stay away from, like, there's some board meetings and some other events that we may be involved in. So the options that I'm throwing out are February, I'm sorry, February? No, May, May 20th, May 27th, June 3rd, and June 4th. So, Ratney?
When I spoke to people, I said that, Eileen, they are eager to get started and we're eager to get started as well. So I would be in favor of the May 20th.
One other thing that the three of us need to discuss, and then hopefully by May 28th, we will have two other folks to discuss this with. I believe that our procedure was going to be that there would be a board member who would be a representative to the group, not participating in perhaps the different work groups, but that there would be a board representative. And so I don't know if the board wants to choose this evening or wait. I guess we can't wait till May 28th if we're doing May 20th. Mrs. Washburn, would you like to continue with this, at least at the beginning?
I was going to say I'm happy to be that representative, or if, or we can discuss possibly waiting until after the appointment of the two board members. I just think it'd be better sooner rather than later. We can always transition over if one of the new members wants to take over that role. That's something we can discuss at a later time, but I think in the name of getting it started, I'd be happy to do that.
That sound all right, Ms. Pettit?
Yes. That sounds like a great plan.
So, Eileen, would your, so 6:30 on May 20th? You're thinking without obviously asking everybody again, you're thinking that's probably going to be okay for a way to get started?
Yep.
Great. Then I think that Julie had sent some letters to the board, just some templates of some letters, and once those letters are okay, we can certainly let people know. We can add, and we can email people and let them know of the meeting time and date, and get started.
Great.
Sounds great.
I had one other, one other item to discuss on that. I do think that it would be a good thing for the board to pass a resolution naming these folks to the planning commission. I know that our letter had started out that way, and I think we'll maybe need to adjust it a little. My thinking would be that it might be good to have the list of names and to have the staff names and make that, have that resolution at the May 28 meeting. It's possible by then that we might even have the terms of the different members, maybe even the work groups that they're going to be a part of. But I think we should probably have a resolution that we formally appoint them to the planning commission, then we have a record of when they, when their terms started.
Yeah, that seems appropriate.
All right. Anything else on the planning commission?
Well, just excited to talk about it.
Okay, good job. Finally, we got, we managed to get all that work in and get that done. I know folks were anxious to get that started a while ago, but some things sort of gotten away a little bit, so I'm glad that we've got it all rounded up and ready to go. I think the next item on the agenda is superintendent discussion topics. Dr. Kraus?
Thanks. We continue to try to wrap up the school year and plan ahead for what summer may look like and what fall might look like. Dr. Lorenz mentioned one of the community input emails that we got about starting up next fall. I believe the governor at some point must have mentioned a suggestion of a hybrid start to the school year, like, two days on, two days off. And just to clarify, there is no guidance currently from the Ohio Department of Education or from the governor, from the governor's office, about how we'll be starting school next fall. And I believe that he was just throwing out an example of, you know, creative ways to do that. Certainly, we, we want to, we would like to have our kids all here all the time doing what we do best, but, you know, the safety of, the safety of our students will be our priority, and we'll follow the guidance as it becomes available. So today, because I'm fortunate to work on a couple of different work groups, one was locally with superintendents and another that has some statewide, we have gotten some early draft guidance that they're considering, that the governor's considering, that we were able to give some feedback on today. So we're starting to be able to get access to some likely guidance and, and see what some other states are doing and, and think about how to do that. We do have a local task force of some superintendents that are working through Hamilton County ESC to try to establish those guidelines. What I, what I suspect at this point will be that the guidelines, much like the guidelines have been published to open up different businesses and different facilities, I believe without strict explicit rules, I believe that schools will be the same way, that there will be general guidelines that have to be followed and that will be up to individual school districts to try to implement that in a way that makes sense for their community. So there will be, without a doubt, differences between school districts and how they are able to accomplish the safety protocols within, within their own district. But we will continue to work together with other districts to share the, share the wealth of knowledge and try not to recreate the wheel. But there will definitely be some differences for implementation so that people can take advantage of the strengths of their own community to try to pull those things off safely, to make sure kids are safe and supported. So we'll continue to watch that and, and talk about that internally, share some of those things out, make sure that we're getting parent input and bringing parents along as we have that guidance. But like I said, today was the first insight that I'd gotten into some real, to some real draft language to try to think about how that will work for us here in district. So it is certainly an overwhelming and scary time for all of us as we think about how we're going to have school in the fall. But we have a great team and we'll continue to focus on that. And I know John has a few updates about some of the projects and the cleaning that the crew was able to do because the kids aren't in the building. John, do you want to share some of your updates?
Yes. Over the years, we have been removing the floors in the primary and elementary schools, just generally upkeep of the buildings. And typically, we've had the chance to do two, maybe three rooms just because of time constraints with the short summer. This year, we've got a little active summer. So what we are doing is removing the flooring in LPS classrooms 1, 2, you don't even remember all these, 11, 13, 15, and 19. I had planned or thought about doing the front hallway of the LPS building and then the cafeteria in the LES building. After we're giving the work, the front hallway is just going to be too much for us to take on. We will address that at some point in the future. So we will be removing the floor tile, and once we get that done, we've been looking at tile to go back with, but it seems as most of the tile manufacturers are shut down right now. So we will get it out of there, get everything else, be able to go into the rooms, do all of our cleaning, and then as soon as the tile is shipped, we'll be able to go in and put the tile back in. In these classrooms, we're doing 1/3 carpet and then 2/3 tile, which makes it nice for the kids to be able to sit in the back of the room on the carpet while the teachers read to them. This is mostly first and second graders. And then they still have the hard surface for desks and chairs, so it does not cause damage to the carpet. So we're planning on having most of the tile removed by the end of May, and then when the new tile arrives, we can proceed and get it done. It's not a problem getting tile, it's just a problem getting the color that we would match, that would match the rest of it, so. But this is something we've been working on for probably six or seven years. We took a three-year hiatus when the potential of a bond issue was in place, and since that is no longer, now we're going to go back and finish up these rooms and be done with the primary school, so it will all be common, have the nice flooring, and a nice comfortable place for the kids to be.
And then I think Kevin had a few updates.
Excuse me, Dr. Lorenz, I wanted to ask Mr. Rinz a quick question if I could, just for a point of information. This is sort of regularly scheduled update, regularly scheduled because of the age of the tile, and this has been included in the permanent improvements budget. Is that how this is, this is working?
Thank you very much. I forgot to put that in. Yes, this is all part of permanent improvement. No funding comes from the general fund, kind of like the air conditioning units we're talking about for the primary school and the cooling tower for the middle school. It is all permanent improvement monies just to keep the buildings current and reduce future maintenance on those buildings.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Mr. Hawley?
Here. Yep, so there's just a couple of things that I just wanted to update the board on. And I'll say what they both are, and then we'll go into them. They are records requests and just kind of a general finance update. I wanted to make sure that that got in earlier. We'll start with records requests. I think it's just important to continue to talk about what that really means, what that is when we're talking about records requests. So it's more like, what is the process? What has been the process? And maybe some ways that the board could discuss ways to improve that process. So when I, when we receive records requests, I'm the records custodian of the district. There is some confusion out there as to whether or not we are sending out information on a regular basis. We, we are. We receive them, we compile the information, and then we send it off to our attorney. The reason for that is because not all records are, honestly, not all records should be shared. There are things that are legally protected, and we want to make sure that we're doing the best job that we possibly can, giving as much due diligence to every records request. A little bit of an update where we've been. We, I, there's been 189 days since the last levy. I've received 89 requests since then. So if you do the math, and if you're looking at it a calendar year, a calendar days, and that's one request every two days. So that is, for our office specifically, that is a lot of extra work. That is stuff that we are happy to provide, happy to take care of. But as you can imagine, receiving a request every other day on top of what we already do on a regular basis can be a bit of a challenge. Me personally, I dedicate a full day at this point to trying to follow up with records requests. I like to think if I actually did work eight hours a day, obviously I work more than eight hours a day, especially at this point, but if I was working eight hours a day, so basically 20% of my time on a weekly basis is dedicated to records requests. The pandemic has made this a little bit more challenging as we have people that are working remotely. So some of these records are housed in areas or with specific individuals that we're not able to get access at this point in time, or it's just taking a lot more time than what would be typical. The one thing that I just wanted to talk to the board about, and I think this is really a thing that the board wants to look at, and is a great conversation to be done in our board policy committee. I know that we are currently down one board member in that particular committee, so hopefully we will have another one added to it. But records are a function of board policy, and some of, you know, some of the questions that have come up about whether or not they are going out, I think is a good question. And so just in the, the desire for added transparency, I think it's a great way to, great opportunity to bring our attorney, look at our board policy and find ways that we could be more, more efficient and be more transparent. I mean, there's some options that we have, or, you know, posting the information in one place on our website, posting what has been asked, when it was asked, when it was responded to, whom asked it. There's a lot of things that can be considered, so I think that'll be something that the board will look at within our policy committee. So that's a little bit on the records request side. And just really quickly too, I believe that a good idea at this point for me personally, just since it is an area of, since I'm a records custodian, is that we have an update every meeting as to where we are, and so I can update you on how many there are and all those, all those details. The other piece that I just wanted to quickly touch upon was finance. So this is something that's obviously very important to the community. It's very important to the school district. And in all honesty, this is something that, as I'm sure as many of us are feeling in our own personal lives, it is something that the school district is feeling that it's somewhat of, it's a little bit of a moving target at times. At this point in time, what we do know is the governor has cut its state funding for school districts. It was not equal amongst the districts. There is a lot of different factors that they utilize. And so when you're looking at Loveland specifically, it was a decrease of about just over a million dollars of our state funding. That's about 8% of our state funding. 8% might not sound like a lot, but I think a million dollars does. And especially when we've been talking throughout this levy process, that what's most important is our cash balance. And there's a potential that it could take a pretty significant dip into our cash balance. Why I say that this is something that is, is something that's updated regularly is because this is the information that we know at this point in time. All we know is that it's for this current fiscal year. There has not been an update as to whether it's going to extend to the next year. What we do know as well is that we will receive some CARES Act funding that is through the state of Ohio. It's called Title I funding, and it's roughly about $300,000 that we will receive. So that is helpful, obviously doesn't bridge the gap between the two, so you're looking at still basically a net loss of roughly $700,000. There are some opportunities that we've had to be able to save some money throughout this process as we've discussed with temporary or substitutes, overtime, fuel, particulars like that. So we will have much more of an update at the end of May when we do our five-year forecast. And two things on that, I really think it's appropriate to do it then once we have new board members, so that they can, they can hear that conversation. And again, it is something that's somewhat fluid. So in a couple of weeks, hopefully we have more information as to if cuts are going to be in the next year, if these are definitely the cuts. So that's, that's all I have on the financial front. Again, I will update as soon as I know information. So that's all the updates that I have, Dr. Kraus.
Can I ask two questions, Kevin?
Sure.
With the CARES Act, the Title I funds that money can only be used in very specific ways, correct?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So if you're not familiar with federal funding, we receive something called Title I. Typically, that's for individuals that are economically disadvantaged. This money that's going to be coming from the CARES Act does not have quite the same limitations as your typical Title I money. So there is going to be a little bit more leeway. If we're looking at the budget in particular though, it may not necessarily take care of expenses for this year because it is something, from everything that I've seen so far, it's since the building closure, so that was the 17th. It was the 17th. Whatever date it was that the buildings were closing, in the middle of March, that's when the funds can be utilized for, and it's typically things that are related to COVID expenditures. So it could be technology, things that may have been able, been needed to add to the budget because of the pandemic. But it can extend into the next year, so it will help. It's a great question. It's not, it's not quite as restricted as typical Title I money, but there are restrictions to it.
Just a clarification on that, Kevin. Because it comes through federal funds through Title I, a portion of that will go to our non-publics, correct?
Correct. So our allocation is roughly $350,000, about $40,000 of it goes to our non-publics.
Did you have another question, Mrs. Washburn?
Yeah, back to the records requests. I think it's a great idea to look into different ways to do it, to be more efficient, and obviously that's a lot of your time, valuable time that where your attention is needed elsewhere. But you said you've had 89 requests since the last levy. How many of those are still outstanding?
Yep, so as of right now, we have... So currently I have, eight are outstanding. Four of them, we have finalized our information and have sent it to legal. And so once I do receive those back, those will be sent out to those individuals.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, I also had one small point, just for those who saw the media reports about the cuts from this state, the million-dollar cut to Loveland funding from this state. And some of that reporting showed that that was 1.82%. That percentage was the percentage of our state funding, excuse me, the percentage based on our total budget, not the percentage of the state funding that was cut for us. So that's why there was a difference in the number. It was an 8% cut in our state funding, but then they took the, the cut and spread it out over the entire Loveland budget, which includes taxpayer, local taxpayer funds that come into us.
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, so that's, that's a very important point. The percentage that was on there was based on operating expenditures. Districts all across the state of Ohio have different percentages to how much the state funds them versus how their local community funds them, and that's typically based on demographics and perceived wealth by the state of Ohio. So that's, that is a great point. So the percentage on there is not necessarily compared to how much of our actual budget was cut from the state.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Kraus?
That's it for updates? We, and I think we're ready for first reading unless somebody has any other questions about general...
Any other questions? Okay, then I think we're ready for first reading.
We did not have a policy committee meeting as scheduled this week because for one, one of our, one of our policy committee board members, it was Mr. Portin, and two, you were busy, Dr. Lorenz was busy interviewing for board members. So we have postponed that, which is fine, but there were a few things that, that we did need to bring forward. So the three, the three policies that are on for first reading have to do with graduation requirements and, and flexibility within graduation for this year, and they are updates just, you know, through legislation. So I, I will, I'll briefly go over them. If you have specific questions, Andrea Coder is happy to answer them. But essentially, the gifted education one just required just a couple of additional lines through legislation. And it, it simply indicates, it changes from implementing operating standards as a general outside to the superintendent will implement policies and procedures. It just pulls some, some of the gifted services back to local control and, and then winds that up with gifted operating standards. So those were legal changes just to the policy. It does not change, it doesn't change... It does not change, um, it, it doesn't change anything, um, enormous in our, in our procedures. It's, it's legal language within that. So you can see that, that update, the red is, um, is strike-through language or replacement language, and the green is new language. And then in graduation requirements, that opens up the, um, the opportunities for, um, students to get seals for graduation, to find alternate, alternative pathways to graduation beyond, uh, simply the, uh, the end-of-course tests and, uh, credits. Students will have opportunities to earn some seals, uh, in order to, um, uh, demonstrate proficiency in some different ways, uh, towards graduation. So both of those, uh, other two policies have to do with that new change in legislation.
Any questions on those policies? Those, that's a first reading, and so they will be adopted on May twenty-eighth.
And the graduation ones are just, um, coming down from, directly down from the state, correct? Because it's the, it's with the seals.
Yeah, so the, the, the five-four-six-oh-point-oh-two, that is a brand-new policy for districts that, that captures the opportunity for students to have a graduation. Well, let me do two things. It requires, uh, all students to have a graduation plan, uh, particular students who are at risk, um, and identifying those students and making sure that they have a plan in place. Uh, Loveland already has these processes in place. Uh, so this is, um, this, this was not a heavy lift for us. These were, these were procedures that we had in place for our students. Uh, but now that those, those procedures are required by law. And then, um, the additional, the additional piece to that is allowing kids with interventions and supports and making sure they have access to the seals or the alternative pathways to graduation. So those two policies go hand in hand.
Any other questions? Okay, um, I think that's all that's under the superintendent discussion topics. Did you have anything else, Dr. Kraus?
Yeah.
All right. Then we would move into our first superintendent resolution. So I would ask for a motion to approve the list of twenty-twenty Loveland high school graduates.
Oh, I guess I'll approve them.
So I, I put both hands waiting, but I think I heard Mrs. Washburn first. So Mrs. Washburn moved, and Ms. Pettit seconded a motion to approve the list, and that is in board docs. Um, I will just say that I'm very, um, very appreciative of all the hard work that has gone into, uh, trying to make a graduation, the best graduation we can. And in these, in these situations that we find ourselves under, and I know it's been, uh, trying to be adapted to meet the needs of all our graduates, uh, again, the best that we can do in this. So, uh, I'm very appreciative of all that work and glad that we get to approve this list of names. Um, is there any other question or discussion?
So I, I would say that my mom made us some, some tiger masks, and I took them over to the high school team today. Uh, the counselors and the high school team have just been working so hard to try to make sure that our graduates feel special and honored and, uh, that we can create a special memory and some moments, uh, for, for individual families. Um, and, uh, you know, surprises are in the works and hopefully, um, you know, hopefully we'll be able to pull off those things to make people, um, to, to earn that celebration or to get that celebration that they earned. But in the meantime, we all will have these, these wonderful tiger masks. Um, and, uh, if you prefer a more subtle side, you can just go with a solid orange, but we can do either one. So the high school team has these. They'll be, um, passing out, uh, regalia tomorrow for our students to come get their caps and gowns. Um, a reminder to people, I'm sure this goes out to, to parents and all the communications, but because we, our students rent gowns, um, we do collect those, um, before the students exit, even when we're at Centas. So, uh, get your caps and gowns and take your pictures and, um, make sure you document all of those things. Having a, having my oldest just graduate last year, I wish I would have taken more pictures ahead of time. I, I failed to, failed to fully understand that all of the regalia went away. So I take advantage of having that at home and, and celebrating there. Um, I do know that the parents have organized a, um, let's see, a parade gets in the way of the guidance from the health department. So I believe it's a moving, um, a moving assembly, a mobile assembly that the senior parents are organizing for our seniors on the twenty-second. And then the twenty-third, uh, will be, um, having individual family graduation, um, which is scheduled throughout the day. I believe on paper that's ten hours, so I imagine that will be a little longer than that. Um, but, uh, hopefully we'll be able to make that special for everyone. But we do have, this is one of our largest classes in quite some time. Three hundred and ninety-two students are on that list. So we are very excited to celebrate every single one of them.
Let's pretty much, I'm likely parents of, and community members of them on Facebook, will be adopted senior. So if you haven't seen that yet, I recommend checking it out. Really, really nice.
What we want, um, and what everybody wants, but I think certainly this community is stepping up to try to make it everything it can be. Um, so, uh, hopefully it'll, it'll be fun. So, and, and regardless, there are three hundred and ninety-two students who are going to be very happy to hear you vote on this resolution.
Well, that's it. And unless there's anything else, Mr. Holly, can we vote on that?
Mm-hmm. Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, the next, um, item is I will make a motion to approve Policy eighty-three-thirty, student records. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I heard Ms. Pettit say that she seconded that motion. This, uh, policy was read at our last meeting, the first reading. Um, this is a, um, a policy that will help or will, it is designed to be sure that we have the best policy to protect the information of our students and will be useful in, um, all sorts of requests that come in to us, including records requests. So, uh, it was just a review of the policy and making it as strong as we can make it to protect our students' information. Uh, any questions or discussion? Mr. Holly, can we vote on that?
Mm-hmm. Mrs. Washburn? Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
The, the next item is a, um, a motion to approve the math resources. These resources were presented at our last meeting. So is there a motion to approve those, that resource adoption?
Okay.
I'll second.
Mrs. Washburn moved and Ms. Pettit seconded. Um, any questions or discussion? I think we did have, uh, quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting and, uh, talked about the, the very good process and the fact that there was some money saved. And so, um, I think we've been through that. But if there are other questions or discussion?
And additionally, that money had been budgeted for Loveland advance to make sure that that curriculum was up to date because that was the last piece of the puzzle.
Right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Holly, can we vote on that?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Um, that, uh, motion carried. Uh, now I see, um, on my board docs, uh, do we have the, uh, resolution concerning busing? Is that under the superintendent resolutions?
It is.
Okay, very good. So the next item would be a motion to, uh, approve a resolution to rescind bus transportation for high school students. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Ms. Pettit moved, and I saw Mrs. Washburn's hand. Um, I think people can tell that it's not something that is, um, uh, that we want to do. Is there discussion about that?
Um, Mr. Holly, do you have a number on what that will save us?
Yeah, so we're still, uh, trying to determine all the associated costs, but it should be somewhere in the ballpark of four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. So we will have, uh, definitive numbers, uh, by the time that we do our forecast in a couple of weeks. And, and Mr. A has been working very, very hard on that. And we have some preliminary numbers, um, as we're diving more into the specifics. We're just confirming.
Okay, anything else? All right, seeing nothing, can we vote on that, Mr. Holly?
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn? Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, now I see that we move into treasure resolutions. And before we start those resolutions, is there a, an additional treasures report, Mr. Holly? Or should we, uh, consider those resolutions and we can discuss them separately?
Uh, we can, uh, just go to the resolutions.
Okay. Um, so it, at this time, it would be appropriate for a motion, I will make a motion to approve treasure items five-point-one through five-point-six. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Washburn seconded. So this set of resolutions includes minutes, uh, lunch fees, and a donation. Is that, is that right, Mr. Holly?
That's correct.
Okay. Doesn't include any regular monthly reports because those will come at the May twenty-eighth meeting.
That is, yes, that is correct.
Do you have any report on any of those items? Or do any board members have any questions on any of those items?
Um, wait. Sorry, pulling it up on my screen. The donation?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is there any more information about it or?
Yes, that's a good question. So, um, so the donation is, uh, for school districts is more of a semantics. Um, so as, as many people are familiar with, that we've had this, uh, amazing collaborative effort with NASS to feed our students within the district. And this is, um, a recoup of some of the joint costs that have occurred, incurred during that, that process. Um, so when we receive money from an outside institution, we have to accept it, or the board has to accept it as a donation. But, uh, it's more of a recoupment of cost, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on, uh, items? You'll notice on the lunch fee item, there was just one, uh, just a typographical correction that needed to be made for this past year. And then the rest of those lunch fees are for next year. Um, and then on the minutes, if you read those minutes when the board, when board docs first posted, um, I did ask for a couple of corrections to that. The most, uh, probably most important one, um, was a change to the May eighth minutes because if you will recall, I requested while we were having that meeting, we came out of executive session at five-fifty-one and we weren't able to adjourn till six-oh-one. And I, I wanted it to be clear in the minutes that no business was conducted. We were simply waiting for technological, um, issues to be resolved in order to adjourn the meeting. So, um, that was, that was fixed in those minutes. Any other questions for Mr. Holly? Not, can we vote on that?
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Motion carried. We then move into, um, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources resolutions. Um, uh, either Dr. Kraus or Mrs. Wiley, is there a report before we entertain each of those motions?
Um, well, the, the report includes, um, just sharing the information about the, the resolutions for the board as well as for the public. When we, um, do a resolution, or three of them, that are included in six-point-one, resolutions to institute reductions in, um, reductions in staff, we fall under several different contracts. We have a resolution for our LEA, our teaching staff. We have a resolution for classified or the OPEC members, and that includes like our, um, bus drivers and our food service workers, et cetera. And then we have exempt staff that follow Ohio Revised Code as well as our administrators who follow, uh, Ohio Revised Code. So as we move through reductions, there are different timelines and different guidelines that we all have to follow. These, this is step one. This is our first, um, of the reductions for, uh, the, because of the failure in, um, of the last levy. So with that, we have, um, and, and also important is that not all of the, like, these are positions that are being reduced, and they don't always equal the same people. So, um, for example, if we are, uh, if you have seniority as a, as a bus driver, you may, you'll bump out other people. Or if you have worked in, um, as an aide, but we are reducing a position of, um, of a secretary. If you've worked as an aide before, then you have bumping rights for that. So not all of the, uh, classified are laid out in this particular, um, resolution for this meeting, and that will be coming in the future. But this is our first, um, our first stab at this. So, and also you'll see in the classified, we had many people who, um, for the bus drivers that we are reducing, we, we knew that we were going to need to reduce six in a failure. We had four who had resigned, um, throughout the year that we just didn't replace. We subbed them out, so you'll only see two names on here to reduce the impact of, of those cuts on people that we employ. So we have just, through attrition, handled many of the reductions. And we'll continue to do that as this unfolds between now and the end of the fiscal year.
So if we were trying to keep, if we were trying to keep a scorecard, for example, if needed to, for the cuts, reduce six bus driver positions with these two in the, the RIF resolution tonight, that actually adds up to six positions, even though you will only see on the agenda two reductions in positions tonight.
Exactly, that is correct.
Any other questions about the first resolution? I don't see any. So do we have a motion to, uh, approve the resolution to initiate RIF or reduction in force, force for certified classified and exempt staff? Again, nobody wants to do this. Um, I see Mrs. Washburn raising her hand, and I'll second that motion. Any other discussion that we haven't, uh, haven't had? Again, this is following, uh, regulations, contracts, um, and law. All right, Mr. Holly, can we vote on that, please?
And Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Motion carried, uh, reluctantly, I hear. Um, the next motion would be a resolution to, let me read it correctly. A resolution to approve, uh, to pro-rate spring sports and year-long finance, fine arts supplemental contracts for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
I move.
Ms. Pettit moved and Mrs. Washburn seconded. Is there, are there questions for Mrs. Wiley about that or discussion?
Um, how did you come to the decision on percentages, um? What are the?
Yes. Good question. We, um, we started with, um, we worked together with our supplemental committee that it has been an ongoing committee that's worked to recommend supplemental contracts, to adjust pay for supplemental contracts, et cetera. We also worked with the principals and we, we went really kind of through the entire list to determine, um, what, what are the things that we could not finish? The work that could not be finished to come up with the percentages. Um, I believe that we will follow this up with, in a future meeting with a memorandum of understanding that we'll both sign through the LEA and the board. Um, we, uh, by our contract, we pay out our supplementals on May twentieth. So in order to get people paid, even if, if it's a smaller amount than the full-year MICA indicated, we wanted to get this resolution to then move forward with getting paid. And we'll probably see a memorandum of understanding coming through for you to sign later.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else?
I'd say, um, to, or more of a comment, I guess, and a question, maybe like, if I wasn't on the board and I was sitting at home hearing this, I would say, well, why are they giving anything at all? Well, it's correct, it's because they have a, had a contract, right? And even though they can't perform their job to, in its entirety, the coaches and teachers are doing stuff remotely still, correct? A lot of them.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up because oftentimes we, we skip over some of the important details. But our coaches, even though they are seasonal, we, we, the athletic department has worked really hard in, in getting coaches and coach, to... we, we, the athletic department has worked really hard in, in getting coaches and coach to work all year long. So they condition their, they, they have conditioning plans for their athletes. They work with them as much as they can within the guidelines of the Athletic Association to, to make it more than just simply getting out and playing baseball. So they, they had tryouts. They started conditioning and then the world stopped, right? And so even throughout that, they have continued to touch base with their athletes. They have programs for them to condition at home. You've seen probably some of them on Twitter. So yes, they have, they have done a lot of work. They didn't play games. They didn't run meets, but they did a lot of work. So we want to acknowledge the fact that we are happy to have them as part of our, of our team. And we want to compensate them fairly, but we also know the, the financial picture of the district and we want to honor that process too. So we work together to try to be reasonable and fair to everyone involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? And can we vote on that, Mr. Holly?
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next resolution is the the resolution for resignations and employment of certified classified homebound substitute and supplemental positions for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Is there a motion? Mrs. Washburn? And then I see Ms. Pettit waving her pen. I do have a question. I am looking at the board docs agenda and I am just questioning, are those items on the board docs agenda? To be, are they visible on the board docs agenda?
I believe they're administrative content. There are three resignations.
Okay. So those would not be visible to anyone wishing to see the motion that we are voting on?
Correct.
Should I, should I state those items?
You can, or I can read them. Whatever you want to do, however you want to do it.
Okay, how about if I read them? So this is motion to, for retirement resignation leave of absence. And so we have three resignations under this item and they include the resignation of Matt Lewis, High School Assistant Principal, the resignation of Robin Wiley, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and the resignation of Suzanne Quigley, Chief Information Officer. So those will, will be in the minutes on the agenda. And the reason I felt they should be stated, number one, is I don't know that they were visible to anyone reading our agenda. But number two, I wanted the opportunity to thank those folks. We don't get to have celebrations of resignations the way we normally do, the way, you know, people who are leaving the district. And in particular, I believe that Squigley is on the, on the meeting tonight and certainly Mrs. Wiley is. And we just want to let those folks know that we certainly appreciate the work that they have done for the district. And not necessarily do we want to pass this resolution any more than we were excited about some of the previous resolutions. So thank you very much, Mrs. Wiley, particularly for your service.
It's been my pleasure. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. You've done a ton for the district and for the people of the community and the teachers. And I know they very much appreciate you, even though we're in difficult times right now. And as Dr. Lorenz said, it's a difficult resolution for us to pass because we don't want to see you go. But you're very much looking forward to spending time with your granddads.
I am. This is my second retirement, so this one's going to stick, I promise. I really want to spend some time with my family. So thank you very much and it's been an honor and I will stay in touch. And I will be with you through the contract, so till the end of July.
The end of July. So thank you.
And so will, so will Suzanne Quigley and yes, we, we will still continue to serve the board. Thank you.
Yes, I should have read those, those effective dates were all seven, yeah, seven thirty-one, twenty twenty. And so I would also just like to make a comment that this is, this is not a place where we can see, again, the full scorecard of what we are doing. There, there is more work to be done as we move forward with the financial issues that we're facing. So more things will be coming forward. And we will continue to have a scorecard, if you will, that shows where we are in making the various cuts that need to be made. So. Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Holly, can we vote on that?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Now I'll get back to my agenda. All right. I will say at this point that the next thing on the agenda, unless I'm missing something, will be a motion for the board to enter into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official. Contrary to what often happens in meetings when we have to go into an executive session, we state that we will come back out and simply adjourn the meeting. But in this case, we will be in executive session and then we will be coming back to the public meeting and there will be action. So just letting the audience know that. But at this point, it would be appropriate for a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official.
Oh, just real quick before we begin to open up the process, just briefly about when we do come out, obviously the people that we end up selecting don't know and the people that we aren't selecting also don't know. So it will, as you said earlier, you hate to do it this way, but Zoom is what we have.
Right. I do, I do have a statement to that effect after we come out, presuming that we have a, a resolution. I will just say as we're going, going to go into executive session, assuming that you vote for it, I did send out notification to all the folks who talked to us of the process that we were, that we were considering, that we were considering a resolution for executive session and that we do need to appoint for the vacancies this evening. So the candidates do know that the appointment is proposed to take place this evening. And Dr. Lorenz, just to clarify, only the three board members are invited to executive session. Is that correct? That is correct. Thank you. And it will be a conference call. So. All right, is there a motion to go into executive session? I see Mrs. Washburn and I'll second that motion. So can we vote on that, Mr. Holly?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Motion carried for the three board members to enter into executive session to consider the appointment of a public official. So we will leave the Zoom meeting at this point.
That's six fifty-eight, correct, Kathy?
Uh, let's see. Yes, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you there in a minute.
Okay, are we live?
Yes, we are live.
Thank you. Mr. Holly, can you show that we have come back from executive session at seven forty-five PM?
Yes.
I understand although the three board members were not a part of the Zoom meeting, I understand there were some technical difficulties. I hope, I have been informed that messages have been sent out so that the new link for the YouTube streaming of this meeting can be found. I am very sorry for any technical difficulties. I guess we broke YouTube. So we are back in session and I would like to read a short statement and then ask for a resolution. The very short timeframe for appointment to vacant seats on this Board of Education has caused a situation where thirty-four people will be finding out this evening which two of them will be appointed to the board. This is not the way we would choose to handle the announcement to candidates, but two resignations on April thirtieth set in motion a timeline that resulted in appointments being required to be made at this meeting, May twelfth. As you may be aware, after resignations, but not sooner than ten days after and at the next scheduled meeting according to Ohio law, this board must fill the two vacancies caused by the resignations of Art Jarvis and Ned Porteun. Board policy stated that we would seek qualified and interested individuals and interview all those who stayed in interest. Thirty-six people submitted letters, two subsequently withdrew their names and in three meetings, Ms. Pettit, Mrs. Washburn and I spoke with each of thirty-four individuals. We are very appreciative of the diverse, talented, motivated, Loveland citizens who proposed their candidacy for a position that will support and improve the Loveland City School District. In these unusual times, it is reassuring that there are so many people willing to be public servants. In interviews, we heard criticism and commendation. We asked questions and we were asked other questions. We heard analysis that included advice to avoid conducting business in an echo chamber and to concentrate on renewing the sense that the Loveland School District is the heart of the Loveland community. We talked about the past and about how to move forward. We also heard from community members offering advice on what kind of candidate should be chosen and even some recommendations of specific candidates. Even during the process of evaluating candidate, candidates, the financial situation of the district worsened with the announcement of state cuts to K-12 education and we talked with candidates about the effects that those cuts will cause. It was an arduous process, but it was a valuable one and we consider it to be our very important responsibility. I sincerely thank all those individuals who submitted letters of interest. We hope that the talented people who were not chosen will continue to be engaged with the district and the tasks of the Board of Education and will seek ways to contribute and use their expertise to the advantage of Loveland students. Many of the candidates expressed the desires, the desire to run for election even if not chosen as appointees and we look forward to those candidacies in twenty twenty-one. At this time, I would like to move, and there is a motion on the agenda and it has several whereas's and I will read those. But I would like to move to appoint Kevin Dougherty, a, who retired in early twenty seventeen as the Kroger Company's first Chief Digital Officer. So I would like to move to appoint Kevin Dougherty and Eric Schuetzenau, a practicing physician to the Loveland City District School Board of Education to fill vacant terms that will end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
I would like to second that.
I see Mrs. Washburn seconded. So there's a motion and a second. The actual motion on the agenda reads, whereas two vacancies have been created on the Loveland Board of Education due to resignations of two board members and whereas the Board of Education has by law the authority to fill the vacancies in accordance with Ohio Revised Code thirty-three thirteen point eleven and Board Policy oh one four five. Now therefore be it resolved by a majority vote of all the remaining members of the Board of Education of the Loveland School District as follows. The Board of Education hereby appoints Kevin Dougherty and Eric Schuetzenau to fill the vacancies created by the aforementioned resignations through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Is there any discussion or any comments?
I just would like to thank everybody who applied. It was great to hear from people. We had so many qualified people step up. And I also thank Kevin and Eric and look forward to working closely with you to help do positive, great things for our kids and our community.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to say, thank, thank you for everyone showing interest. It made it very difficult for us to come to a decision because of all the qualified people that did apply. And just thank you to everyone who took the time to interview. It was a pleasure talking to every one of you.
Thank you. It's absolutely true. It was amazing, the people we talked to, the, the candidate, the candidate pool was very, very strong. So thank you very much. Okay, anything else?
Look forward to getting to know both gentlemen and bringing them along. And I know that Mr. Holly and I will make ourselves available to answer any questions and help bring them up to speed as best we can to make, so that they're ready to be voting members of the board in two weeks.
Yes, these two board members who, when the vote is made, then these two new board members will be sworn in on May twenty-eighth. And Mr. Holly, can we vote on that, please?
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Again, thank the audience for your patience and your ability to switch platforms and links and all those things. And if there's no other business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Nobody wants to leave. Mrs. Washburn moves to adjourn. And Ms. Pettit seconded. There's a motion to adjourn. Mr. Holly, can we vote on that?
Dr. Lorenz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettit?
Yes.
Mrs. Washburn?
Yes.
Motion carried. I have us adjourning at seven fifty-two PM.